Okay, welcome to everybody that's joined us here in council chambers, as well as those that are viewing from home this evening. This is a meeting of the Pecosin City Council. This is Monday, October 23rd, for the rebroadcast folks. I'm going to lead you in the invocation, but Boy Scout Troop 28 is going to lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. And when you do that, you will just come up to the podium right here and do that. And if we could all please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we lean forward into the items before us this evening, help to guide us and keep us mindful of all of our citizens' needs. As we deliberate those issues, keep us ever mindful of the state of the city and the state of its citizens. That is the most important thing in our city today. And we ask for a blessing that be felt by those who serve our military, especially those in foreign lands, as well as our public safety officers here in our city, in our state, and our nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we thank the members of the Boy Scout Troop for leading us in that. And we will see you at a future meeting. Come talk about government someday. All right? All right, we have one presentation this evening, and this is from Mr. David Ko. He's our Director of the Colonial Behavioral Health. He comes and sees us at least once a year, if not more frequently, to let us know the goings-on within that very important agency. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Before I start, you know, we hear news about changes down here that are coming on with Ms. Wiggins. And my first day on the job at Colonial was March 22nd, 2004. And I'm in the middle of my first day, and the phone rings, and somebody says it's a lady named Judy Wiggins from Pecosin. I didn't have a clue. I was from Martinsville. And she was calling to tell me that that evening you were going to be appointing me as Pecosin's representative to the Community Criminal Justice Board. So, my first contact from local government after coming here was from Ms. Wiggins. And I'll remember that for a long, long time. But thank you for having me. It does seem like it's only been a few months since I've been here, but I look back and it's actually been just a touch over a year. So, time's been flying, which means we must have been having fun. And we have, for the most part, in the last year. So, we're pleased to share with you some of the things that are going on at Colonial and ask your indulgence in maybe helping us out with maybe a couple of challenges that we're looking at legislatively. First, just showing you that of the 161 residents that we've been averaging per year in the last four fiscal years, you can see that the majority of folks that come into Colonial Behavioral Health, to our York Pecosin office down on Route 17, come to us for reasons for mental health services. About a quarter come for substance use disorder services. A much lower number, which is pretty typical for our general population, for developmental services are those individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, is what that's really referring to. And then those that have a mental health or substance use crisis of some sort, we run at about 14 percent. You'll see that the vast majority of the folks that we're serving are adults between the age of 18 and 59. Much smaller percentage of geriatrics, and just slightly less than 20 percent are children in adolescence. And we're fairly evenly split between male and female, slight majority for males being served there, again, over those last four fiscal years. I wanted primarily to share with you some of the developments that have occurred since we last spoke. And one is Colonial Behavioral Health has been privileged to be one of two community services boards in fiscal year 2017 to receive what's called a PACT team, P-A-C-T, for those that are watching on television. A PACT team is a program of assertive community treatment. It is a program designed for individuals with serious mental illness that have, in our communities, the most serious and repetitive records of incarcerations, psychiatric hospitalizations, interactions with emergency services, or visits to the emergency room. Among community services boards tend to get some of the more difficult populations that we have in our communities, and this is among the most difficult of that population. It involves wrapping an entire team of staff, vocational workers, psychiatrists, nurses, case managers, substance abuse professionals, and so on, wrapping around a number between 80 and 120 individuals. It's an entire team. So, it's a lot of, it sounds like a lot of expense for a small number of people, but the research has been showing that those individuals cost our communities so much money in the care that they need and the care that they receive and how much they utilize that it actually saves money for the Commonwealth and for local governments to receive that. So, we have been wanting a PACT program for years, and we finally got one last year. So, we're very happy about that. I believe just handed out a few minutes ago is a little rat card that indicates a new page we have on our service directory website, our Network of Care website, that is designed, I think, last year when we were here, we spoke to you primarily around our services to service members, veterans, and their families. We have been designated as, really, among the community services boards in Virginia, the leader among all 40 of our CSBs. And so, since we can't get out and meet everyone, reach everyone, we wanted to be able to create a website and a web directory for individuals and families, whether they're veterans of any war, family members, or actively enrolled in or uniformed in duty right now. So, we've created that website. It does have with it, for the first time in Virginia, a definition that we worked out with the Virginia Veterans and Family Support Agency, the definition of what a military-friendly behavioral health clinic means. And our York Pecosin office is the first in Virginia to have that. This website is not something that we have been able to put together on our own. The foundation was put together by the Williamsburg Health Foundation, but this military website, this page, and this outreach to veterans is actually funded for five years by Farm Fresh. And so, it is the first time we've been able to have that type of a partnership with a local business. So, we're very proud of that. Everyone has heard about the opioid crisis in this country. It has affected every community. It affects every community we serve, every community in Virginia and across the country. Well, in September, we opened what's called Suboxone Treatment. It's a medication-assisted treatment. We'll talk a little bit more about it on the next slide. But we are one of a handful in Virginia right now to be called a gold standard provider for the state in having met the highest standards of qualification and of service quality as what the state calls an OBOT, an outpatient. I can't even remember what OBOT stands for, but we're one of them. We are one. But Suboxone is not the same as methadone, I'll say that. It is designed to get, help someone to get off of the drugs, rid the cravings, those things, but not to be a lifetime medication. It's not something we are interested in getting involved with. So, that is a new issue for us. Also, in September, we have begun working with a company to provide onsite pharmacy services so that the individuals that we're serving can get all of their medications at Colonial Behavioral Health. They can have them mailed to their home, not just the psychotropic medications, but every medication out there, with the exception of IV drip. They don't do IV bags, but everything else we can do as we are moving more and more toward integrated primary care and behavioral health services. Last year, the other thing we talked to you all about, other than veteran services, was our CIT program, Crisis Intervention Team Services, where we have our Assessment Center, Training of Law Enforcement in Mental Health Issues, Recognizing Mental Health Substance Use, and now Intellectual Disabilities as well, and how to intervene and how to get people to the right treatment at the right time, the right place. Well, this year, just earlier this month, our program received the award from the Williamsburg Health Foundation as their 2017 Healthcare Award for the entire community. It is not a program that the foundation funds, but they recognize the quality. And we have a video. We're not, I didn't bring it tonight because we didn't have the time to do that, but we'd be happy to share that. I think we might have shared that with Ms. Wiggins already. But we'd be happy to have you view it at your leisure. It's a little over 12 and a half minutes, but it recognizes all of the partners we have in that, including the York Pecosin Sheriff's Department and the Pecosin Police Department. So, thank you for your partnership with that. It's been recognized across the state. And lastly, we are working now to implement a new business model called Same-Day Access to speed up services when someone calls for help. The normal way of doing business has people waiting a few days, sometimes more days than we would, in every case, more days than we would want them to. This is a new model that's been, for Virginia, that has been put out across the nation where we can begin offering access to appointments for those who want it the same day that they call. That is going to be our goal. We are having our first full day with the consultant that's working with us. All 40 community services boards are going to be doing this. We are among the first to be involved with this. Tomorrow, we have our first full day with a consultant up in Williamsburg to do that, and we will be implementing that through our entire service area. We probably won't have that finished. It's a lot of work. We probably won't have that finished until late spring, but we're working on that process now. I did want to share with you a couple of things about Suboxone. I've already mentioned most of this, but part of what we hear about Suboxone and medication-assisted treatment, unfortunately, there's a group of providers out there that, you know, hand out pills and don't really require much in the way of other services. And a pill does not fix a drug problem. Pills don't do it. They don't cut it. It requires active treatment. And one of the reasons we are being considered a gold standard program is because we're not going to, we're not going to just hand out pills. There may be individuals who call us for services who choose not to come, because if they're going to come to us, they're going to engage in some work to do this. And it's going to require case management. They're going to have to go through our intensive outpatient program. They're going to get some services by peers. It's going to be a lot of work, but recovery is work. Recovery doesn't come easy to most people. So, it's an expensive service. It costs over $5,000 a year to serve one individual, and the majority of that cost is within the first two months of treatment, because it is very much a medical service. So, I'm open to questions at any time. I'm sort of rolling along because I want to respect your time. I also mentioned last year some facility issues that we're having, and I have actually found letters that I wrote as early as November of 2007 outlining some of these issues to Where in our Williamsburg area locations are overcrowded, parking's terrible, there are times it's difficult to even come in for services and have routes because you can't find a place to park. Our buildings are overcrowded. The York Pecosin office, we don't have the parking problem. You can see the parking lot there that we share with the church. It is a large parking lot, but our building is jammed. There's nowhere else to put anything. So, we have the same issues in our York Pecosin office that we do in the Williamsburg area, and we are going to be looking to relocate over time here, all of those services, so that we can expand, we can have more options to bring more programming in, additional services, some of the things we need to do here. I've never heard of bunk desks, but we might have to start bunking desks and so on in our offices. So, we are looking toward future expansion, toward future growth, and we've got to have the room to do that, to expand our capacity. Now, I did want to come to a few legislative priorities, and one in particular I would ask you to consider possibly contacting legislators regarding. House Bill 1549 passed the General Assembly last year, and in many cases, it's a good bill. Following up on the tragedy with Senator Deed's son from 2013, Virginia has finally, in House Bill 1549, designated what a standard array of services should be for every community services board in every locality in Virginia. That has never been done. In almost 50 years of this system, that has never been done. Finally, it's done. The problem is that to do that requires an investment at the state of over $225 million. Well, the General Assembly last year passed the mandates for those services, but appropriated only 4.9 million to cover the cost. And some of those mandates are going to hit us July 1 of 2019, two additional mandates, same-day access, and primary care monitoring and screening, and eight more mandates would hit us on July 1 of 2021. So, within the next three years, $225 million of new cost at a minimum coming to the CSBs with no money. So, you know, one of our themes this year is put your money where your mandate is, to our members of the General Assembly. It is something that places an undue burden upon localities, upon communities, and we would ask if you would consider taking this on as an item to address with legislators when you speak with them. We would really very much appreciate that. A second item for us is, and the reason it's a legislative item is because it's Eastern State. We are looking to consolidate, and have now for a couple of years, for 10 years we've been asking about this, to get attractive land at Eastern State Hospital to consolidate all of our Williamsburg area services onto one campus. The reason we're dealing with that, we're not talking about the York Pecosin office with legislators, is because of the nature of the Eastern State property. It is considered state surplus property, and it takes legislative action to do anything with it other than sell it. And we're not asking them to sell it to us, we're asking them to give it to us and to allow us to build there. So, just seeing that, I don't want, wouldn't want council to think we're not considering the York Pecosin office on an equal level. It's just to do that does not require General Assembly action, whereas the Eastern State piece would. And then, thirdly, there's a plan that's in the works from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services that earlier drafts at least have referred to community services boards having to buy beds from state hospitals. And if you use too many, it may put your community services board at risk. If the demand is too high, it may take money out of your budget to help balance the state hospital budget. That places community services boards, and frankly, local government, in the position of being responsible and at risk for running state facilities. There's something inherently wrong with that. So, any of these that you would be willing to address with legislators, we would love to have that happen. I think some of our other localities have put this into some of their legislative statements and so on. We would appreciate any consideration that you might make to those as well. And with that, I'm going to breathe and see if there's any questions.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Mr. Ko.
Hey, I will tell you, David, I really appreciate you coming to see council. I'm sorry it's been a year, but it has been a hectic year. We are going to take all of your legislative action requests and put them in a document and funnel it around council. Might need some help on that third one to see exactly what that is.
It's very complicated.
Okay, so, I will tell you that we're very used to, what was that slogan that you used?
Put your money where your mandate is.
Yeah, we'd like to see.
I'm proud of that.
We would like to see the state do that in a lot of respects, you know, on a lot of fronts, but we're not always surprised that we get unfunded mandates passed down to localities. So, we will certainly take up all three of those, add them to a legislative package, as well as to lead the charge on that from the protection of, hey, you know, this is what the localities do, and this is what the state does, and there's a reason for that. I will tell you that mental health, substance abuse, and developmental problems and mental health issues in general are one of the things that I feel like the state of Virginia does very well. And I think that they do very well by staying in the business, because it's important and something that we can't do as individual localities. I will tell you that we're proud of our York Pecosin alignment with the Colonial Services Board, and we like our partners even up in Williamsburg. So, we will certainly add their, that property to our legislative agenda, because we feel like it's that vital. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for keeping us attuned, and because I know that there are issues within our own city walls when it comes to mental health and substance abuse, and that we lean on you and your organization to help us with those, and that y'all always seem to step up. So, thank you for that, and thank you for what you do every day. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, next item on the agenda is an audience for visitors. If there's anybody here that would like to speak to council on any issue, now is that time. Seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of October 10th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We approve the minutes of the regular session of October 10th. Questions or comments, last-minute additions? Seeing none, E.V., please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to nothing.
Okay, thank you. And the work session?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of our work session of October 10th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We have moved forward those also. So, E.V., please.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. First item under new business this evening is a resolution endorsing the Go Virginia Region 5 Grant Application, and this is dealing with the broadband initiative. Judy, who would like to present on this?
I'd just like to say that at the last meeting, you adopted a similar resolution in support of the regional, in support of the unmanned systems and testing demonstration center application, and this is an application for the regional high-speed broadband application for Go Virginia. They're very similar, and it's presented for your consideration.
Okay, council, how would y'all like to proceed?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution endorsing the Go Virginia, support the broadband initiative proposal as a regional economic development initiative through the Go Virginia program.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We endorse the Go Virginia grant application through resolution. Questions or comments?
I would assume this is similar to the last one where it doesn't commit us to any funds, correct? Just for clarification.
Okay, just support of the resolution and no commitment to funds is the answer. All right, anything else? Okay, E.V., please.
Certainly. Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried, vote seven to zero.
Okay, the next item under new business, I'm not sure I really want to do this. Would I, I mean, cancel a couple of meetings? Y'all really want to do this? Cancel a couple of meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. I am good with this. The next item under new business is a resolution canceling the second meetings of the months of November and December here around the holiday season. So, is somebody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we cancel the second meetings of the months of November and December.
Second.
Okay, I'm pretty sure there will be no comments on this, so E.V., please.
I actually do have a comment, Mr. Mayor. In light of our discussions about the CIP, I think, now, I will say this first, I'm okay with canceling the meeting on Christmas. But that second November meeting, I think we need to keep in mind the discussions we've had these last two meetings, and I'm a bit hesitant to cancel that one, being we have so much on our plate. And that's just my two cents, and I don't want to jump the gun and cancel it now if we do have business to take care of, now as that date gets closer, if there's nothing, you know, we need to discuss or have a meeting for, I'm okay with it. But I think we're jumping the gun a little bit, and if it's canceled, we've got a lot to do, then that's just my thoughts on it.
Okay.
We can always call a meeting.
Right.
And it's got to go before the planning commission, and it probably will not come back to us by November.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. We'll have another meeting between now and then. What I would say is, when we look up at the stack-up of items that are scheduled to be heard, right now, we are, that's why we wanted to have these planning, these work sessions now and get things going down at the planning commission level. Not saying that we wanted them to work during Thanksgiving, but, you know, better them than us. All right, so, that being said, any other comments? Okay, not E.V., please.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Cenella.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, comments of the city manager, which I will defer to the assistant city manager this evening, Judy?
Okay. I was asked to give a report tonight on the Messick Pier. I found out that money was only sufficient to do half of the slips. So, we have 13 slips that are on the breakwater side, now have water and sewer available to them. Once the slips are leased, the electrical connection will be activated by the person who actually has the lease. The water will be there all the time. The meter will be set when the lease actually enters into the lease with the city for the electrical service. I would also like to recognize Debbie Mahanes, Dave Callis, Gretchen Gokanauer, and the entire Parks and Rec staff and their helpers for the outstanding seafood festival held this past weekend. We had beautiful weather, excellent crowds, heard no complaints, or had no problems, thanks to all. It's a big commitment which they all accept eagerly, and they work around the clock to make sure that everything goes off perfectly, and everybody had a really good time. I also want to congratulate Pecosin's own Ashley Volrath for winning the Miss Virginia USA title last night. She's a Pecosin High School graduate and is currently a junior at Virginia Tech, and she will be representing Virginia in the Miss USA contest. So, we need to give her a big round of applause for her accomplishment.
Very good. I can do that. All right, Bud, I'll start with you this evening, council directors.
Okay, I'd like to start with seconding Judy's comments of the city staff working on the seafood festival. It was an excellent event. We did have excellent weather. And also thank the city staff. And also thank the city staff for their work, planning for the work session before this council meeting. They did a fine job preparing for that. And to thank the Boy Scout Troop 28 for coming out and leading us to the pledge, leading to the flag, and Davy Coe for coming to visit us to talk about the castle board.
Okay, Councilwoman Andrews.
Just the same, just want to say how great the Seafood Fest was. I look forward to it every year, not only going, but all the kids that come back home to attend it. It's, you know, great to see, you know, those people that have gone, those kids that have gone out and are doing their thing, all want to come back home for the Seafood Fest because it is so special, and, you know, that's really mostly due to our staff that just does an amazing, amazing job. It was great to be up there and see so many people from all different areas, not just Picocin, there enjoying the Seafood Fest. I think it's a great thing for our community as a whole.
Very well. Vice Mayor Freeman.
Just seconding the Seafood Fest comments. There were like 50,000 people there, more or less, and not a single incident or complaint, and I think that just speaks to the, you know, everybody, Dave, the police, the fire, and all the people he had helping him. Other thing that I'd like to bring up, we had talked a long time ago about talking about the sign ordinance, and I'd like to get that on an agenda and talk about it. I know the city, the fire department just got two new electronic signs, and as it states, as it stands right this minute, we've got one at the middle school, fire department's got two, but the city is the only people that can have electronic signs, which are counted a state-of-the-art thing, where you can, you know, update them from your telephone or your computer, and we don't allow our businesses and other folks to have them. And I think we ought to bring it up and talk about it. That's all I got.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand, on the sign ordinance, is this something that we talked about as far as trying it out? And so you're saying we've had the tryout period, and you'd like to talk about whether we can expand that to other businesses?
Yeah, I just don't think the government should have special privileges that our businesses don't have.
Okay. So why don't we add that to a future work session, and we'll see if there's a consensus to send it to the planning commission. All right. Very good. Councilman Hucks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a reminder, Ms. Kathleen Holshue spoke to us at our meeting on June 26, and she followed up on September 5 with a letter asking us to consider tax relief for 100% disabled veterans, and I think it would behoove us to give her an answer in the near future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Green.
Just like to echo the efforts for the Seafood Festival. It was a great event, and even though the exchange club couldn't sell any hot beverages, I think we made up for it in all the cars that were parked, so it was a great event. Remind everybody tomorrow is Food Bank Day at the old municipal building from 10:00 to 1:00, and our hosts this time are the Picocin Women's Club and the Picocin Garden Club. And so we look forward to a successful day, it's rain or shine, so don't let the rain, if it comes tomorrow, deter you. We'll have plenty of food.
Very good. Councilman Canelle.
Just want to echo everything that's already been said. I'm last in line, so my thunder's often stolen, but...
You want me to let you go first?
No, 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 that's fine. But that's all I've got.
All right. I think everybody covered the Seafood Festival rather well. I will tell everybody in the, at the TV audience, that Dave has somehow managed to drag himself into the council meeting for yet another 12-hour day after a full weekend of Seafood Festival. So Dave, we congratulate you and your staff, and I know that you are humble and always would say it was everybody else, so we appreciate the everybody else in that as well. So thank you for that. Thank your staff for us as a combined unit. What a great job they did do. I will tell everybody I had the pleasure of meeting Ashley Volrath right before she took off for the Miss Virginia contest, and what a pleasant young lady she was and represented Picocin very well, and we are just so thrilled for her success, wish her continued success at the next level. Just a fascinating young lady who really seemed to have an eye on what she wanted to do in life, and not only in life, but with the potential for winning Miss Virginia, what she wanted to do in that forum. So I just think she'll be a great, great representative of that, and I just tickled pink to have met her before she went, and that she would think about doing that before she took off. So it was, it was just hearty congratulations to her. I don't think I have anything else this evening that we haven't already talked about, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. If we adjourn, E.V., please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hucks.
Aye.
Councilman Canelle.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt, the motion was carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are adjourned. Thanks.